We are running a few minutes late for the session. I would like to get today's meeting for the Atherton Town Council, April 16th, 2014, seven o'clock started. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Collectively, allegiance is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll paper.
Councilmember Whitmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeGolio.
Here.
Mayor Wees.
Here.
We have a forum. We're good. Thank you, everybody, for attending. We're going to go ahead and start today with a presentation for a proclamation and recognition of James Dobbie. And I'm going to give this to Councilmember Whitmer.
Thank you. Thanks. So we have a proclamation for Councilmember Dobbie, our former councilmember Dobbie. This is where as the town of Atherton thanks Jim Dobbie for his six years on the city council and numerous other town committees and commissions, and whereas the town of Atherton recognizes the diligent and countless hours Jim Dobbie spent supporting the various other government agencies, including the Association of Bay Area Governments, the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, San Francisco Airport Community Roundtable, San Mateo County Library JPA as an alternate, and the San Mateo County Emergency Services Council, and several others. And whereas committed to, he was committed to making a difference in the community, Mr. Dobbie served as the mayor of the Atherton City Council in 2011, where he played an instrumental role in assisting Atherton to whittle down its structural budget deficit. And whereas Jim Dobbie dedicated his time and his efforts to the town, being appointed on several committees, including the Civic Center Advisory Committee, the Blue Ribbon Task Force, the Transportation Committee, the Audit and Finance Committees, the Environmental Programs Committee, the General Plan Committee, and as an alliance to the Helmut Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation. And whereas the contributions of Mr. Dobbie have made the citizens of Atherton, have become invaluable to the citizens of Atherton, and he has made a lasting impression on those individuals that he has now been associated with. And so therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in him as the mayor, we do hereby commend Jim Dobbie and his exemplary record of leadership as a member of the council and on committees and commissions, and extend our best wishes for his continued success and endeavors. So that's signed by Mr. Carey and Carey Weest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmer. One more. The person receiving gets a chance to say something, so Jim asked me to spend about forty-five minutes going on with you. So I'll make just a very brief comment on his behalf. So essentially, you know, as you know, Jim is unable to join us today due to health reasons, and these are the very same reasons that affected him earlier this year, leading to the conclusion that he was unable to regularly and effectively serve the town that he loves in the manner that he felt was appropriate. As many of us know, Jim was very passionate about the town and his service to it. Prior to his six years on the council, Jim served on the General Plan Committee, and I won't go through all the ones that we just read off, so rest assured. And most notably, he's been on the Blue Ribbon Task Force, which laid the groundwork for the Newtown Center project that we have well underway today. Jim has lived a very interesting life. He was raised in Scotland during the Depression. He became an RAF Spitfire pilot and served his country with distinction in the 1940s. His engineering training provided him with the thirst for knowledge, something that he never lost. He was always learning, and when he coupled this with his fighter pilot training, he was always pushing the envelope. His ever-growing technical skills and military training coupled with his lessons that he learned by growing up in the Depression got him quickly recognized as a leader, where he managed many international companies as their CEO. Jim used these same skills here, where he was instrumental in bringing in new management. And then he played a leading role in leading the council to make some difficult decisions to outsource several key departments at our time of need. Despite opposition from several influential residents, Jim ensured that the town stayed the course, and the results speak for themselves: improved service, improved financial performance for the town. Jim is known for his tough decision-making and putting the town first. He did not and does not back down amid controversy when he is studied and is sure of the facts. He possesses the confidence needed to be a leader and demonstrated that regularly here. Like all of us, Jim was on the council because of the big pay and lavish benefits and the short hours. No, actually, like all of us, he did these things because of his commitment to service to the town. He stepped aside when he felt he could no longer serve the town in the manner in which he felt the town deserved. He did not want to let any of us down. His love for Atherton was second only to his love for his family, and especially his wife, Pat, without whom he would not have been able to achieve so much. Please join me in thanking Jim for his service and for wishing him a speedy recovery and a long life.
Bill, can I have your, Senator Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's really an honor to be here today to recognize Jim for his service. He was exemplary in what he did, and that word was used a number of times already, but it really is true. When the city was struggling, and the town was having that little fight internally and having that fight financially, to make things work and to bring it together, he was there. He was the right person at the right time to make the right decisions, and it showed in everything he did. And that legacy will live on because of the success of this town and how it is strengthened, the strength that it has today, and that will carry it to the future with a lot of great success. So I have a certificate of recognition for Jim, and I'm just going to read it. It's only a short paragraph, but "to thank him for his dedicated and exemplary service to the residents of Atherton and the Peninsula as a member of the Atherton City Council. His impressive record of personal and civic achievements and long and distinguished record of leadership have earned him the admiration and respect of all who have enjoyed the privilege of associating with him and offering him his best wishes for a speedy recovery." And I think that was the best thing that you could say, Bill, is the need for that speedy recovery, because we want to get him back with a lot of energy so that he can continue to not necessarily be on the council, but continue to bring that leadership to the town that's so welcome in here. So let me present this to you, Bill, and please give it to Jim with my appreciation and the appreciation of the California State Senate for all over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill, I'm going to go ahead and hand this to you as well. It's from Anaheim U, and it's echoing the same comments that everybody has mentioned, recognizing his long-term service to this town and a considerable contribution. So, Jim, thank you very much. And we also have a nice gift that I'm going to track Bill down to make sure that he can deliver, and again, thank you, and make sure you say it from everybody, that we do definitely appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to item number two. Again, Jim, thank you very much, and our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family and a speedy recovery. We're going to move on to item number two, a proclamation recognizing the Atherton Police Department Safety Communications Personnel.
Mayor, could you join us down here, please?
Was he part of the?
He's going to be part of this. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Every year across this nation, in April and May, we take this opportunity to recognize two distinct groups in the public safety arena. One is in April, we recognize telecommunication weeks, and that is to celebrate and recognize the great work that our dispatchers do, day in and day out, answering calls for service, dealing with the public, and sometimes giving first-aid advice on the phone to somebody that's in really need. So they do a very, very excellent job. And then in May, we have Peace Officer Memorial Week, and we recognize those officers in California and across the nation that paid that ultimate sacrifice. So I'm going to have dispatcher Anton Netteris read the proclamation for the mayor that you've designed for dispatcher appreciation.
In recognition of Atherton Public Safety Communications Personnel, whereas the city council of the town of Atherton, along with the entire community, would like to honor the contributions of all communications personnel in the public safety arena for your continued efforts to preserve public safety throughout our 911 non-emergency lines and dispatch of our police personnel to thousands of calls for service each year across the nation. And whereas each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunications. As it was, it was first conceived by Patricia Anderson of the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in 1981, and was observed only for that agency for three years. Members of the Virginia and North Carolina chapters of the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, also known as AFCO, became involved in the mid-1980s. By the early 1990s, the National AFCO Organization convinced Congress of the need for a formal proclamation. Representative Edward J. Markey, Democrat, Massachusetts, introduced what became as House Jointed Resolution 284 to create National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. According to congressional procedure, it was introduced twice more in 1993 and 1994, and then became permanent without the need for yearly introduction. And whereas the city council of the town of Atherton would like to declare National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through 192014, which has been set aside so that everyone can be made aware of your hard work and dedication, which provides a vital link to the public safety services on which we have come to rely every day. And whereas the city council of the town of Atherton wished to thank you for all the sacrifices you make to create a better and safer world for the public. Your commitment to your profession is appreciated by the public safety communications community and the citizens you serve. And now therefore, as the mayor of the town of Atherton, on behalf of the Atherton City Council, I hereby commend the outstanding service performed by our communications personnel.
Very good. Sergeant Sherman Hall will now read the proclamation for Peace Officer Memorial Week, which is next month.
May 10th through 16th. So in recognition of National Peace Officers Memorial Day, in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. The calendar week in which May 15th falls is recognized as National Police Week. Whereas the candlelight vigil is traditionally held on May 13th regardless of the day of the week on which it falls, the National Peace Officers Memorial Day service is hosted by the Fraternal Order of Police and the Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary. And whereas the town council and the community of the town of Atherton would like to honor the men and women of law enforcement for their never-ending commitment to the protection of life and property, and whereas the town council would like to honor those eight fallen officers who lost their lives in the line of duty in 2013: Officer Kevin Ton, Officer Michael Crane, Detective Jeremiah McKay, Sergeant Lauren Butch Baker, Detective Elizabeth Butler, Officer Gilbert Cortez, Officer John Cucci, and Deputy Jeremy Meist. And whereas the town council would like to honor those five officers killed in the light of duty enrolled from prior years: Warden Leon Nelson, Sergeant Raymond Willis, Special Agent Buford French, Constable Anthony Coates, Constable Anton Harnish Feger. And now therefore, as mayor of the town of Atherton, on behalf of the Atherton Town Council, I hereby proclaim that the week of May 10th through 16th, 2014, be recognized as National Police Week, and remember those officers who paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives while serving and protecting the citizens of this great state of California. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Atherton to be affixed on this 16th day of April, 2014. Mayor Carey Weest.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your service and chief. Thank you. All right. Told you we'd be busy today. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number D on the agenda, which is the Atherton Carriage House Project.
Do you think I'm going to need this?
Yes. Stay in your quarters.
Hello, I know that I've met several of you before, but let me introduce myself. I'm Susan Masetti. I am the co-president of the Atherton Dames, and I have lived in Atherton since 2001 and have been a member of the Atherton Dames for six years. I want to thank the town council for its time in allowing me to formally present this very important project and opportunity. I'm here to present the Atherton Dames Carriage House Restoration and Renovation Project. My goal tonight is to give you a better understanding of three things. First, what the dames are undertaking. Second, why the Carriage House Project is a priority for this town. And third, why we need your support. And before you to ask for an official written endorsement from the town council of the dames' Carriage House Project and to request a financial commitment, a funding partnership between the dames and the town over the next three years, an endorsement and firm commitment on funding will demonstrate the town's commitment to the importance of this Carriage House Project for the betterment of our community and encourage grants and private donations to follow. Let me first discuss the project. The dames are undertaking a complete and thorough restoration and renovation of the carriage house. In the past, the carriage house has been improved, but these improvements were limited and narrow in scope. They did not observe or respect the historical importance of the carriage house. There has never been a comprehensive plan which addresses the entire building until now. Our plans outline a careful restoration of the authentic and historical elements of the carriage house. For example, we are returning the doors and the floors to their original height. In addition, we are removing and relocating the heating and cooling systems so the main room can be restored to its original format. At the same time, our plans are also innovative, in that they use some of the historical aspects of the carriage house to meet present-day needs, such as converting two of the horse stalls into ADA-compliant bathrooms. Our plans do not change the fundamental structure or footprint of the carriage house. Our plans enhance every room of the carriage house so that we preserve its heritage, but also create a building that is relevant, useful, and equipped for the future. After the restoration and renovation, the carriage house will have many uses. It will provide our community with a unique venue for lectures, classes, parties, small gatherings, receptions, and community events. There will be a variety of rooms where you can hold meetings. The carriage house will differ from other locations, as it will provide a special historical ambiance, one that cannot be replicated, as well as being intimately connected to our park and our town's history. Now let me discuss my second point. The carriage house project is important to this town and should be considered one of its priorities because, five points. The carriage house is the oldest building in our town that the public currently has access to. It's an architectural treasure as it represents our local history and heritage. The carriage house is the most prominent building in Holbrook Palmer Park. Its preservation is fundamental to the successful implementation of the park's master plan. It's a history lesson in our own backyard. Our carriage house is a one-of-a-kind turn-of-the-century carriage house remaining in the Bay Area. Put simply, the carriage house is a significant part of this town's DNA and the brightest symbol of our town. Now on to my third and final point, why we need the town's support. Without the town's support, the carriage house is headed for demolition by neglect. The dames understand that the town accepted the gift of Holbrook Palmer Park with the understanding that the town would not fund the park. However, this is over 50 years ago, and times have changed. Given the park's importance to the community, this approach needs to be reevaluated. A well-maintained park with usable facilities is a realistic expectation of our residents. Our request for the town to endorse our project and to contribute financially to the carriage house project goes deeper than funding or upkeep. The dames seek a partnership with the town to invest in the preservation of our town's history, to invest in our community, to invest in our future. The mere scope of this campaign is unlike any other that the dames have undertaken in the past, and without a partnership between the public sector and private contributions, it's unlikely that this project can be accomplished. The dames need the town's endorsement and financial commitment to the carriage house project so the dames can focus on raising the additional $1.5 million needed to fund the $2.5 million project. The town's commitment will greatly assist our fundraising efforts, as it would serve as an outward signal to the public and community that the town supports and believes in the importance of this project. So in conclusion, the dames are asking for an official written endorsement from the town's council of our carriage house project and a financial commitment of $1 million over the next three years. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration, and I'm available if you have questions.
Please bring him back to council for questions, please. Councilmember Whitmer.
Well, I've had some conversations with Susan. Obviously, you know, from my personal perspective, I echo some of the comments that you've made with regards to the importance of that piece of history, you know, in our very own backyard, and walking through that facility, you can see very easily it does need substantial improvements, and it can really be made into a showpiece while preserving the historical nature. So I'm personally in favor of giving some assistance. The level of financial assistance, obviously, you know, we would have to discuss, but I would probably tie that in a matching type of arrangement as opposed to just an outright, perhaps where we would consider doing something upfront, and then you would match up to a level, and once you hit that achievement, then there might be something else that would come forward, et cetera. But I think that I applaud the dames for what they're doing. I think it's a great project and something that the town has, will benefit from for years to come. So I personally am interested in doing something, and hopefully my fellow councilmembers will join on that. But the amount is something that we all have to decide in way with a lot of other, for me, with a lot of other activities that are going on and determine. But I think a matching might be more in line, and hopefully you would agree with that, because you're going to have to match it to get to that level anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitmer. Councilmember Lewis?
So I think that this is a very ambitious undertaking, and it's, I think, it's worthwhile to look at, and I appreciate the efforts that the dames have put forth to now to kind of define the scope. I think that the timing is a little, and I've made this very clear, the timing of this capital campaign and the push for funding, especially from the council, is not right. I think that the town has a number of master plans, health and safety issues, pension, unfunded liabilities that need to be taken a look at and money is put to, that I'm not sure that this propels up to that level. Also, the real main push that all of our residents are going to be asked to contribute to is the Newtown Center, and that is and should be the primary focus of the residents at this point. And I see other people shaking their heads, no, they don't feel that that's important, but it is. It's much more important to the town than the restoration of the carriage house at this time. I have supported the efforts a year ago when it was first unveiled at a dames' meeting, that this is something that should be taken a look at. I just think the timing is wrong, and I would really appreciate the dames putting their focus into helping the capital campaign with the town center first and foremost, and look at a bigger picture and a more long-range picture for this. The way the town has been hamstrung with the measure, and what it was last year, that was put on the ballot for the town center, having to go out to the residents for private donations and restricting any use of any public funds to rebuild the police department that have severe health and safety issues in the town center. So that's my priority at this point, but I really appreciate all of the efforts.
Do I respond, or do I just stand here?
If there's something to respond to.
If I could just make two small points.
Sure.
The dames are, have been involved in fundraising for the park for over 50 years, and we're very respectful, but that's our goal and that's our mission, is the park and to raise money for it. So we appreciate the town center. I personally think it's a lovely building, but I do think that our residents and the dames will be reaching out to a broader group of people to help us fundraise, that they will understand that there is a difference, but it's part of who we are. It's in our bylaws that we need to continue to raise money regardless of the project for the park, for, you know, the Holbrook Palmer Park. And, oh, and the carriage house, you are considering a master plan for the park, and just to consider in that aspect, the carriage house is the most prominent building there. So when you're working on a master plan, you can look and see that this carriage house, it's not insignificant, it's probably the most significant, so. I'll just, all of this rebut, since you're inviting me. Okay, okay, we'll have just a little bit. I'm not saying that the carriage house is not an important project. I think it is an important project. I think the timing is wrong, and the dames fundraising on other projects could be a little bit more scaled down, and asking the town for a million dollars at this point is, you know, not without other consequences, and we don't, just don't have that much money to spread around, so.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor. Go ahead. Any comments or questions?
Well, I have said on many occasions that I think that the park is the crown jewel of the town, and I really believe it. And I think that notwithstanding the history of the council accepting the will of the park as a gift with the condition that the town not be responsible to support the park, we have been supporting the park. And times are different, and we need to invest in our park. I have no doubt about that. I think over the next 10 years, this town should make a major investment in both looking at the facilities and what we use those facilities for, making them as good as they can reasonably be for our residents, and looking at the planning plan in the park and very seriously managing that, including highly qualified personnel to manage it. And I think that the carriage house is the most important structure in the park. I think that you defined it very well. I think that you defined it very well. I think that structure will be much more visible and meaningful when it's been refurbished and when some of the buildings next to it are no longer there, which I hope will happen. So I think that the Town Council should support this project. I think that, I think it's an important project. I'm familiar with the architect that you've selected. I think you've made an excellent decision. I know the work that he did in Woodside, which I've been very impressed by. I would love to see this facility as a really useful facility by our residents. And I think that exactly what you said is right, that we could, in the course of using this facility, feel our history and celebrate that history, and that would be a terrific thing to the town. I don't think that it has to take away from the Town Center, which I think is no doubt the most important project that we have in front of us over the next ten years. But it's complimentary. It is a park, it's not the Town Center. And I think that the issue of financial support is something that we have to look at in the context of what the projects are that are coming out of the multiple master plans that the council in its wisdom has implemented over the last year and a half, and they're just coming to fruition now. We don't know all the projects that have come out of them, but we do know that there's gonna be a lot more projects than we can afford. So this is a long-term plan. And we need to look at how we can provide support to this project in the context of that and in the context of the discussion of the next budget. I like the idea of looking at it in terms of a matching type of thing. I think it's a serious project that we should look at.
So I have to come at it a little differently because everybody else here has had an opportunity to talk to you and ask you questions. And I know that even members of the public haven't had an opportunity to hear what your responses are. So I'm kinda cold. So I'm gonna start by just merely asking questions so that we can all understand as we're trying to make decisions here and as people in the audience try to understand why we're talking the way we are, it's like somebody's missing, and a part of it is the questions.